Check. Test. Test. Cool. Alright. Call this meeting to order. This is a city council business meeting. It is 6:00 PM Wednesday, October 8th. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
The flag of the United States of America, the republic for which it stands, one nation.
The clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Murray. Councilmember Middleton.
Present.
Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Present.
Councilmember Rathwell.
Present.
Councilmembers Dundon and Matavetsky are absent. Council President Protem Hotchkiss.
Present.
Thank you.
Move on to approval of the minutes. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
Make the motion.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Move on to our reports from committees and appointments. Does anybody have any? Anything to report from a committee meeting? Any appointments to make? Alright. So we can move on to our public hearings. The City of Binghamton will hold a public hearing regarding the City of Binghamton 2026 proposed budget. This public hearing will take place at 6:00 PM, 6:00 PM on October 22nd during our regular city council business meeting in city council chambers, 38 Holly Street, Binghamton, New York. Residents wishing to participate in the public hearings may do so electronically by submitting their comments prior to 1:00 PM on the day of the meeting to clerk@cityofbinghampton.gov or in person during the meeting. We don't have any other public hearings tonight, so we can move on to public comment. Residents wishing to submit a public comment may do so electronically by mailing their comments prior to 1:00 PM on the day of the meeting to clerk@cityofbinghampton.gov or in person during the meeting. Is there anybody that wants to come down for public comments today? Thank you.
Good evening, Darkabdelism. When I just want to say again, express regards for your daughter and her friend. I hope that they're recovering. Absolutely. It's good to see you all. I wanted to come down and share a couple of things. It was a very interesting work session on Monday. I saw some odd behavior from people that I generally have a lot of respect for. But there was a program called Move-In with Cross Rod, Cross Mods. Just so you know, they did this pilot with a couple of landbanks across the state. And there's mixed opinions on how they fit in. So just, I'm just sharing that. They are a great option in regards to speed and cost. But in regards to the fabric of a neighborhood, I guarantee you, let me put it this way, I guarantee you if there were some lots in some neighborhoods, they would not be happy with the placement of a cross mod there. In some neighborhoods, and you know what I mean. Robert, yeah, you're nodding your head. In some locations, let's just say that. Second, it's not like the city has a ton of vacant lots anyways. They put out a portfolio of vacant lots for the block-by-block program. Oddly, didn't have my block on there, even though I have four vacant lots on my block. Three, all city-owned, two privately-owned, and four vacant structures, but it couldn't possibly be because they're that petty, but there aren't a lot of vacant lots, and CPC is going to give a few of them for the block-by-block program, so you know, it's a good thing, but just to find 10 scattered sites around the city where this is appropriate and a good fit aesthetically is going to be a challenge. I expect a couple will end up on my block. I won't scream and yell because I think it's important to produce affordable housing as quickly and as abundantly as possible. Second thing, I just know the mayor loves saying how he is the most incredible pro-housing mayor in the history of the universe. There are three already awarded block-by-block grants just in the city of Rochester. There's only five cities that were available for this funding. We are in last place. We're doing what we can, but just a reminder that sometimes the media and the theater doesn't always match up with reality. Oh, and you should check out and see what Syracuse Ben Walsh is doing, the mayor. Massive, largest portable housing projects, probably in the history of upstate. Granted, Micron's coming and they need that, but it's incredibly impressive. Sorry, Jared. The other thing I would say is that tonight's resolutions, there's a lot of like transfers within the capital budget. The capital budget is interesting because you can't do a lot of line transfers as easily as you can in a departmental budget. You didn't use all of the equipment money you had, okay, swap it over to travel and go to conference at the end of the year. As long as it's consistent with the city's rules, does it have to go to a board of E&amp;A? Does it have to come to council based on the amount? But the capital lines are different. I am not suggesting that there's problems with all these, but I had a lot of questions. For instance, when Rich David tried to create the little parking lot in the metro center courtyard for his buddies, right, Dallas Brothers? And build like 11 parking spaces, like $400,000.
Little under a minute left.
He tried to use the Court Street Gateway Project funds that were remaining. It was illegal. It was inappropriate, and the comptroller admitted that. You go to a municipal bond advisor, you put together a packet, you borrow funds for 20, 30 years, 15, 20, 30 years. And it's also, you have to say, what is it for in the life expectancy? Flood walls, maybe 30 years. A fire, a vehicle, maybe 10 years. You can't then just, I don't know if you've already borrowed for these funds and this is remaining. But if that's the case, the money should go back and pay the debt. You can't then just say, hey, we didn't use all the borrowed money, so we're going to just buy stuff. So just some question. It might be okay, based on if you hadn't borrowed, if you're using short-term bands or you already have borrowed. My time up. Bonds suck anyway, so I'm done. Alright, thanks.
Is there anybody else for public comment? We didn't receive any, okay, did not receive any public comments. So we're going to close the public comment and we can move on to, there's no review of a mayoral veto. Do I need a motion if I want to change the agenda?
Yes.
Okay. I would like to have a motion to move the second read legislation to after our first read legislation.
I'll second. I'll make a motion to move first read to after second read.
Then I'll second. Motion, second. Any discussion? Basically, I just want to see if we'll have six people by the time we get through the rest of this legislation to maybe be able to vote on the sale of those lots, which requires six council members to even pass. So motion, second, discussion, and we can take a roll call.
Councilmember Rathwell.
Aye.
Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton.
Aye.
Councilmember Murray.
Aye.
Council President Protem Hotchkiss.
Aye.
Thank you. That's 5-0.
Thank you. We're going to move on to first read legislation. The first on list is introductory ordinance 025-59, considered in finance with Councilmember Kavanaugh.
I'd like to motion for Council to pass 025-59, ordinance to amend the 2025 fire budget for fire equipment.
I'll second.
Sorry. Motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Well. In view of the public comment, I was just going to try and pull up the packet from the last work session. To go over these transfer lines. Just give me a second. Actually, probably faster if I do it on the web sync.
Find it?
Yes, I did. So if we attack these in order, let's see. Tour fund. These are going to be in reverse order, of course. Ramps. Hand fire, okay. So the to kind of the point of public comment. You have a large chunk of this money is coming from this is going to go through for a lot of these that we're about to consider. It's the special investigation unit funds that are that we, that were seized and have been sent to the city and that we're now redistributing, so it's basically seized drug proceeds and stuff that are funding most of these transfers. Some of them are are kind of capital lines that we put some money into on a yearly basis, like the federal pipe inspection and such. That's covering these, so it's not, generally speaking, they're going to be projects that I think are out of the scope of proper transfers, but I'm also happy to follow up on that question with the comptroller just in case, but I think we are in good shape with these pieces of legislation, but I'll go through them as we go through them.
Would you mind running through the lines? Just representing the individual lines and having it in front of me?
Yep. So for fire equipment. We have a little bit left over in the the main fire station line. That's 2,700. Then 9,200 from the emergency metal service program, 8,000 in guardrails, 10,000 in our general equipment repair line, 90,000 for that, that special investigation unit money, 58,000 from the bridge improvement line, 75,000 from the flood wall and pipe inspection line, and 3,400 from the funds from the equipment repair auction line.
So none of that would have been in the bond or band category, or some of it is? The piping or flood wall?
So those, I believe the flood wall and piping is out of our, are the ones where you put money into periodically. And I believe the fire station one might be left over from a bond.
So is that questionable then? Still going to fire equipment?
I don't think so. I'm willing to, I don't. Tim enough Chuck is still here.
I can try and call him and see.
Yeah. Let's, we'll try and get the comptroller. Let's.
It does, I mean, the, the reflection in public comment was helpful and made sense to me, and typically budgets aren't my forte, but made sense to me in terms of if we previously bonded or banned, then it should go against the debt, and I just know that we didn't have that conversation during the work sessions that that was introduced, and I'm, I mean, I'm also looking at that doesn't seem, I mean, we're going to, we're going to hit that with the DPW ordinance as well.
So in a broader sense, we probably borrow this money at a lower rate than we're able to borrow money at the moment or going forward. So if it's legally expendable this way, it's actually probably a net benefit to spend what we've already borrowed, then reborrow it at a higher rate. Does that make sense? What? Because interest rates are higher.
Right, but is it legal? That's the, that's the real question.
Lawyer Bob?
So part of it depends on whether this, I think everything that this would be under, if it is part of a bond, would be part of a ban. So those we kind of roll up before going out and fully bonding out over a longer period of time. So I mean, you can adjust the useful life for what's included in your, where you go out and bond for, ban for. Typically, it's what you ban for, and then obviously like the bonds with a longer period of time, so you can adjust the useful life for things, so as to comply with the state comptroller stuff, and it requires redoing the bond ordinance piece to reflect the fact you're amending the useful life of whatever's in there. But it is possible.
So if amending the useful life makes sense, but if we're completely changing the use, is that what's in question?
And, and do we have to amend the bond before we do the transfer?
So my guess is that none of this is underneath any sort of ban or bond for specifically the reason that I don't think that the city would want to go and monkey with it. Like typically when we do these capital transfers, it's because it's money that we've budgeted for and set aside as part of the budget versus, like when we bond, like especially for equipment, like it's for that specific piece of equipment and that then gets sent out. And you make the purchase once the bond's in place. So like we don't buy, like the flood wall stuff, we don't bond out for unless we're just doing like a larger infrastructure project where we need a lot of money to support the construction of it. The fire station one, I suspect, is the design piece, which is something we front the design costs for. And then later we are able to roll those into the bond.
I think you're probably right, but I do not know for sure.
I was not able to get ahold of the comptroller.
Because it will be a question on basically all of these. We have Rachel Perkins number by chance? I don't.
Then there's a, we if this is something we don't feel comfortable answering right now, we could also hold this over until we could have.
I mean, I, I I suspect that these are all kosher, if you will, but I wouldn't swear to it, so if that's a, something that's going to be a concern for everyone, then we should just we should just hold them all over.
How are we feeling, council?
I mean, that, that use piece is, I mean, I am most familiar with identifying very specific uses in the nonprofit sector for grants and then being monitored as such, so it does make sense to me that we would want to ensure we're not doing anything that I mean unintentionally impacts our use of the funds. Like if we identified a use and there's a step we're skipping in making sure that we can change that use, and I get that it's not for all of them. But it's at least for a couple of them.
I mean, I I highly doubt we are in questionable territory, and I am personally comfortable voting on these, but we'll also follow up with comptroller, and I'm sure corporation counsel will as well to make sure that we've dotted i's and crossed t's on these. But again, thoughts? Because it's going to be the same issue for basically all of them.
I would prefer to dot the i's and cross the t's before we make the decision. That's my thought.
And we'll hold up all of these things for two more weeks.
I I mean, councilmember Kavanaugh and Chair Kavanaugh of the Finance Committee, I, I mean, I typically lean on your expertise when it comes to to these, and so, I mean, if you're, if you're representing that you're comfortable, then I don't feel compelled to, to not move them.
Councilmember Middleton. Do you want to move these right now, or do you want to wait?
I, I'm going to lean on Councilmember Kavanaugh for his advice.
Okay.
Ask him what he thinks. If it's gonna, if it's gonna affect something, then I wouldn't want it to, whatever he thinks is best, he knows.
Alright, I'm going to run a tiny limb here. And say that, that I am comfortable. But I will also follow up with the comptroller. And I think yes, and I think he would pull his signature off if, if there was a significant enough question on any of these lines. Alright.
Okay. So we, that was our discussion. And we can, we can do a roll call vote to adopt introductory ordinance 025-59.
Councilmember Rathwell.
Aye.
Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton.
Aye.
Councilmember Murray.
Aye.
Council President Protem Hotchkiss.
Aye.
Thank you. That is 5-0.
Moving on to introductory ordinance 025-60, again, considered in finance with Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Okay, so this is, I'd like to motion to consider, or motion to pass 025-60, an ordinance to amend the 2025 ramps budget for a vehicle purchase.
Second.
Thank you.
Motion, second, discussion.
This is for their kind of general utility vehicle that also does, holds the plow and does the plowing for the ramps, so something needs to be up and running, and I think this is coming out of parking ramp, yeah. So same, same idea as far as lines that we're drawing on with unused funds.
Any other discussion?
Oh, I, it sounds like maybe Lawyer Bob got the sorry, corporation counsel here, he got got a call back.
We will wait until we hear the results of that phone call. How about that? No.
Yeah, I think so.
What was the verdict?
None of it is borrowed money.
Okay.
And he mentioned that if you're looking, anything that has, anything that's borrowed for will have a project code attached to the end of it. And that can help decipher, you know, is this something that's coming because it's coming out of the general funders or something specifically linked with a borrowed money, either a ban or a bond. And you can follow up, I let him know, Councilman Kavanaugh, that you can follow up with him tomorrow morning.
Sounds great. Thank you. That allays some concerns then. Okay, alright, so back to oh ramps.
So this motion, second, we had our discussion. Want to take the roll? In this, please, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Rathwell.
Aye.
Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton. Councilmember Murray. Council President Protem Hotchkiss.
Aye.
Thank you. That is 5-0.
Thank you. Move on to introductory ordinance 025-61, considered in finance with Councilmember Kavanaugh.
I'd like to motion to approve 025-61, an ordinance to amend the 2025 police budget for vehicle purchases.
I'll second.
Got a motion, a second, and any discussion? Think this was specifically for the van, right?
Yes, the prisoner transport van that needs a lot of work and upgrades, including better, better climate control for the actual prisoner area, so comfort and safety for all in that situation.
Is, so this is for a new so purchase of a police prisoner transport vehicle, so a new one. And we talked earlier, and we talked in the work session about repairs that are needed to a current one. Unless I'm misremembering, so will we, so we'll have two?
Correct.
Okay, and two is a full fleet when it can, when it's considered a transport vehicle?
I believe that's my understanding, is they want to have a backup as well as being able to make use of the current one until the new one comes in.
Okay.
Is there any other discussion? Hey, with the clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Rathwell.
Aye.
Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton. Councilmember Murray.
Aye.
Council President Protem Hotchkiss.
Aye.
Thank you. That's 5-0.
Thank you. We move on to introductory ordinance 025-62, considered in finance with Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Okay, this is, I'd like to motion to pass 025-62, an ordinance to amend the 2025 DPW capital budget for vehicle purchase.
For a second?
I'll second.
Got a motion, a second. Do we have any discussion? Got a motion a second, do we have any discussion? Uh, trying to remember, is this?
This is the skid steer.
Yeah, they have a no, that's the next one. No, it is this one, sorry. Putting together funds by.
By vehicle, this is DPW skid steer.
Yes, it is a skid steer, okay, wow, can, a lot of budget transfers, okay, yeah, their, their current skid steer is um, not cooperating, and it's not um, deemed deemed repairable, because it's kind of been having ongoing issues for a long time, and they're pulling together the funds to purchase a new one.
Uh, TPW seems to be pretty consistent about trying to repair things to the point where it's, you know, uh, really to the breaking point, so I I'm I'm pretty confident that if they're saying this is unreparable and in rough shape, it's, it is so. So I think they're getting to the point where it's, it's, you cannot get parts for one this old, so.
Okay, um, any other discussion? Seeing none, with the clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Rathmo?
Aye.
Councilmember Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton? Councilmember Murray?
Aye.
Council President Protem Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Thank you, that's five zero.
Thank you, uh, moving on to introductory ordinance oh twenty five dash sixty three, considered in finance with Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Like to motion to pass oh twenty five dash sixty three, in order to implement the twenty twenty five capital fund budget for park purchases.
I'll second.
Uh, motion a second, is there any discussion? Uh, I think this is specifically for the Parks Department is going to get a new, new vehicle as well as doing upgrades in the senior se- senior center for the kitchen. Um, they were able to get some other folks' uh, budget lines to cover those costs.
Correct.
Any other discussion? Okay, with the clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Rathmo?
Aye.
Councilmember Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton? Councilmember Murray?
Aye.
Council President Protem Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Thank you, that's five zero.
Uh, moving on, we got introductory ordinance oh twenty five dash sixty four, considered in finance with Councilmember Kavanaugh.
I'd like to motion to pass oh twenty five dash sixty four, in order to implement the twenty twenty five sewer fund budget for over budget line items.
I'll second.
Uh, motion in a second, do we have any discussion?
Uh, so just noting that these are all transfers within the sewer fund itself, uh, not affecting the the general fund.
So where it says fund balance, that's the sewer budget?
Correct.
The general fund balance?
Correct.
Okay, and then the one thousand ban principal, does that still fall under our not borrowed category?
Let me look. So that would have been, I believe, money we set aside to pay that ban, and then uh, the payment was less than we anticipated. Oh, good. So that is why there is still money sitting in that line.
Yeah.
All right.
And I I had asked, uh, I had asked Chuck about that.
Any other discussion? You have the clerk take the roll, please?
Councilmember Rathmo?
Aye.
Councilmember Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Murray?
Aye.
Council President Protem Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Thank you, that's five zero.
Uh, we're gonna move on to introductory resolution R twenty five dash sixty one, considered in planning with Councilmember Rathmo.
Thank you, I'd like to uh, motion to adopt R twenty five sixty one, authorizing the mayor to enter into agreements with various agencies for the use of FY fifty one CDBG and ESG funds.
I'll second.
Motion a second, any discussion?
So this is just over seven hundred thousand dollars allocated from the Federal Department of Housing and Urban Development to the city. It is an annual allocation that we receive as a participating jurisdiction. Um, and the applications for this funding are reviewed by the Community Development Advisory Council, ultimately recommended to council, at which point we then review and approve. So this authorization is for federal funding, it is not a local allocation, and it's not locally initiated.
Okay, any other discussion?
I'm gonna mention that um, all sort of, the flow of all HUD funds is currently frozen because the federal government is shut down, so even though we're, we're doing our job and getting these contracts out to uh, the recipient organizations, and they all have projects that are waiting on this funding, the current federal shutdown is going to uh, hold them up if it continues, and so this is an example of, you know, something happening at the federal level that is gonna almost immediately impact uh, local, you know, local issues and local folks trying to do good work, so.
I would add to that, so it'll, it'll impact their opportunity to draw down on the funds are to be reimbursed, and so many of these agencies are relying on that reimbursement to be able to move their projects fully forward, there are some that I think likely will be able to move forward without the reimbursement, but certainly a concern.
Yep, and it's also impacting current contracts for funds for this year, that it, you know, that that reimbursement pipeline is now, you know, turned off, so.
Any other discussion? Okay, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Rathmo?
Aye.
Councilmember Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton? Councilmember Murray?
Aye.
Council President Protem Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Thank you, that's five zero.
Um, okay, we're now at second read legislation, we still have five people, five members. And I know there was a, do you guys have to leave?
Do you have time?
Do you have time?
Oh, half hour, oh, no, no, we won't be able to.
Okay.
No, I don't, we need to.
Do we hold it over? Oh, wait, you said it's not a holdover because we can't actually vote without six members.
We don't have forum for this part of the meeting, basically.
Yeah, I mean, effectively, like, you can't vote on it because there's no way for you to approve it, it requires six people to approve it. So it, it like, by taking it up, you're basically doing it to fail, and we have to reintroduce it, so it it's basically like, you can't vote on it until we have at least six people here.
Okay, how do we, do I just not introduce the motion to adopt then?
Don't even.
Yeah, I mean, you can, you basically just take no action on it, because it can't be voted on.
Okay.
Okay, so since we don't have uh, six members here present, we cannot vote on introductory ordinance oh twenty five dash fifty seven. So just move on. And that'll go, that'll go on our next meeting, uh, our next business meeting. So with that, we can move to communications from council, can start with Councilmember Murray.
I continue to uh, encourage first ward residents and also um, all the residents of um, the city to um, take a look at the Clinton Street DRI website, um, there is a uh, meeting um, that should be confirmed, that will be listed on the website. Um, that will provide opportunity for the public to hear more about the applications that were submitted and um, which ones will be moving forward, and so I just encourage folks to continue to um, review that. So take a look at the website for uh, updates and stay informed and reach out, reach out if they have any questions or concerns.
Are, are those applications live for everybody to see, right?
So, the, the deadline to accept applications has passed, however, the committee has been reviewing the application. So the last meeting provided an opportunity for the public to be a part of the process where we shared details about what was included in the application, and the committee decided which projects would move forward and, you know, which ones we needed more information um, about. And so the next meeting will continue that process, um, where we can share um, the feedback and updates, pretty much like the information that we needed to be able to move forward um, about some of the projects. So for example, um, the scope, there were questions regarding like scope of work, or you wanted to like sit with the person who submitted the application to provide feedback into how that application could be enhanced to better serve the community, and so the next meeting will now provide an opportunity to inform the public about that process and and pretty much update. So we're not at the point yet where we're voting yes or no on the various projects, we're still in the process of discussing each individual application, and so if folks have concerns regarding any of the applications that were submitted and want to share those concerns, I would encourage them to participate in the public conversation so that the members that are going to be voting can hear those concerns, if they have any.
Thank you so much, um, and Councilmember Middleton?
Um, I wasn't gonna say anything, but I, um, as many of you guys know, last week my daughter was hit on a hit and run uh, accident at school, I just wanted to thank every single person who reached out to my family, reached out to us, sending things, my constituents, um, every single person that um, checked on me, even though I was probably in a zone, not even thinking about anything, but uh, my council members, thank you all, um, Binghamton uh, Police Department, thank you for taking care of my baby. I was out of town when this happened, and um, just every single person in the community that has been very supportive during this time, uh, my daughter is still going through the motions, concussion, she'll probably need physical therapy and regular, regular therapy now because she's, has, was worried about everything, but um, thank you for your support and just keep my family in your prayers during this process, thank you.
Thank you, got anything tonight, Councilmember Kavanaugh? Uh, Councilmember Rathmo, no communications, uh, I don't have any communications either, so I would accept a, a motion to.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Got a motion a second, all in favor? Aye, we're adjourned, thank you.